Next slide, both Mrs. Sharp and Ms. Keegan are here wanting to talk about Williams. We'll give kind of an overview about Scott and answer any questions that you might have. Both, since this is really focused on the magnet enhancements, since we've kind of gone over that already, again, we're really focusing on the magnet enhancements, but the preschool portions of that in particular, and then giving information to you about PIP's classrooms. Mrs. Sharp, would you like to just share where Scott is as it relates to the magnet program and or Williams and the PIP classrooms?
Yes, we are excited to continue with four preschool classrooms at Scott Dual Language Magnet for next year. We have had registration days over the last several months on Thursdays, and I'm happy to report that Scott has been in demand. It's been really fun to watch returning families with little siblings coming in, filling those spots. And we have created some community placements at Scott where families and students may not qualify for that four-year-old at-risk criteria. Dr. Makia has worked hard to ensure that we have balanced classes. Fifty percent of the students are English-speaking, fifty percent Spanish-speaking. So, we have had a few families that were at Witten requesting move over to Scott. So, that has been really positive, and Dr. Makia has done a good job of managing those rosters and ensuring that we're hitting the criteria that we need.
So, we want to make sure for the board, as we talked about Witten and Scott and the families that are going to Scott, that just as a consensus, there's comfortability with us continuing to highlight Scott Magnet as the dual-language magnet, which then certainly means that Witten is really offering some Spanish enrichment, but they're not the dual-language school or the dual-language magnet school. So, as long as we're consensus with that, we will continue to allow families to choose to transfer to the full program. And of course, the difference is the full Gomez-Gomez model is in place at Scott. So, we're excited about that, and we'll continue with that process. On the Williams portion, the full-day preschool teacher has moved over to Shaner. The room is still there and available. We now know that we anticipate having approximately eighty, perhaps more, so we've said eighty, but I think the projection is now a hundred, but eighty-half day students that will need placements throughout next year. So, we will need to create space or leave space available for those young people who can enroll at any time in the year. Normally, Dr. Harrington would be here, but she is out of town today, so we're just restating what we know regarding the PIP program. Because of that, the Williams Magnet preschool program may still be in place, but we now have two options. One, to leave the space available for the half-day program. Most of our half-day programs are in the west side of Topeka, so it would allow us to have a half-day program in a magnet school. Additionally, like Scott, where people are requesting, we make community placements for people who might not otherwise qualify for preschool. We would like to be able to accommodate that should there be such a request as well. So, that room is available, and we are not repurposing that room for anything else other than keeping it space as a preschool room. And as the PIP classrooms fill up, we will need probably three other rooms that are available across the district for half-day programs. We have identified at least three, and if we need more, we will have to identify those as well. Ms. Sharp, did I leave anything out, or do you want to add to that at all? She's going to also go into PIP a little bit, but are we comfortable with continuing with allowing for Williams to leave the room as a preschool room and to be utilized either for a half-day or for community placements should there be the request?
Yeah, Mr. Woods? So, thank you very much for this update. This is very good. I will tell you that I know at Scott, as we have worked to enhance the magnet and actually have it accomplish what it's supposed to as a magnet, you end up with this kind of demand for preschool. That's a testament to the hard work of the folks on the ground like you all. We've had the discussions about, you know, the magnet enhancement in general. We focus specifically on Williams this year. So, I see it as only kind of the next logical step to try to, starting with the preschool bill, the program where we have the same kind of demand. And I understand that some UAA you have to make changes like this to have that same kind of demand at the preschool classroom. So, I see this as entirely consistent with the discussions that we've had earlier. So, I'm speaking only for myself, I guess, but I'm good with it.
Dr. McCarter? I just have a quick question, but because I know you have more to present. The Witten transfers, at what grade level are those occurring? Do you happen to know?
I would have to get with Mr. Kip.
Do you think they're younger?
I know for sure there was some kindergarten students, I believe.
Yes, but there were some families that originally were not being given the transfer opportunity, and they were choosing to enroll in Topeka Collegiate. And as we have our magnet relaunch, we wanted to make sure that we're comfortable with receiving those families, but we've called all those families back, and they have agreed to transfer over, and Mrs. Dr. Makia has already accepted those back in. So, they are younger children. So, we're talking kindergarten or below.
That's good. So, there's probably not much fear that they will be able to integrate into the program?
No.
I know at the older ages, they, you know, that might have been trickier for them to make that transfer. I agree with Mr. Woods. I am thrilled that we are adding classrooms, because we know the strongest intervention we can make is with early childhood ed. So, this is evidence-based practice, and also just what we know is right for our kids in Topeka. Thank you.
I don't know if Mrs. Keegan wants to add anything when we get to the PIP. The exciting part about this, so right for now, that room will be vacant and open. The exciting part is we're providing equity that whatever you can get at McCarter, for example, you can get a half-day program, you can get a half-day program at a magnet. The magnet will be Williams in this case, in terms of the half-day PIP program. But that allows us just to expand opportunity, but expand it in all ends up Topeka. That's really our goal. So, we will keep you updated on those numbers. Mrs. Keegan, was there anything to add to Williams? Are you good with us continuing on?
Good.
And then, as we go into the PIP classrooms, Mrs. Sharp, do you want to pick up with that?
Yes, we are excited to have space reserved in every building that the facilities allows us to, with the exception of HPC. So, that is reserved in every building at the elementary level, plus our three early childhood sites. You know, something that's different with PIP, like with the state pre-K or tuition, you're setting those rosters at the beginning of the year with the preschool intervention program. As soon as the students turn three, we need to start serving them. So, on their birthday of turning three, they're starting in the classroom. So, that's why we continue to expand and add over the course of the year.
Yes, that's why we need to make sure you hold space.
Correct.
Do you have to be holding toilet paper, right?
No.
Was that your question?
So, we've had 222 evaluations this past year. We project eighty students, potentially a hundred, because as soon as they turn three, we want to make sure we have spaces open for them to go directly into school. And we have already identified the staff, so we already have the staff in place, and Dr. Harrington is ready to put those people into the vacant classrooms as they fill up.
So, just to clarify, to make sure I understand, so if we did not take these steps and prepare in this way, and you had some students turn three and show up and qualify for the preschool intervention program from the Williams community or anywhere else, they would not be able to decide they wanted to try to send their kid to PIP and Williams. They may have to go somewhere on the west side, even if they lived on the east side, without doing this.
This should allow for more options for attendance and also help us control some class size in the existing PIP rooms.
All right, and I'm glad that you actually mentioned that, because this past year, the class size actually was too large in PIP classrooms, which is part of the issue. Did I say that correctly, Ms. Sharp? And so, those numbers were too large in multiple classrooms, in part because there wasn't other space of PIP classrooms that opened and available. And so, as we open up those spaces, that should drive that number down, and it should allow us to be proactive in filling those spaces. So, thank you for mentioning that as well.
In another part of my life, I was discussing with a physician who was talking about his particular anxiety about the number of children being born who are drug addicted, and those are the kinds of kids that I see are beginning and are increasing in our PIP program. And so, do we have any projections? I mean, he was talking about the projection of the numbers, just in this community around here, of those kinds of children. And I just wondered whether or not we have some projections about those children who will be moving in our direction over the next few years.
We have seen some, a pretty steady uptick in the number of students that we're receiving via like a TARP transition, where they've already had some individualized service and plans in place prior to turning three.
So, they are seeing, there are numbers. So, you haven't received any other kind of numbers from the state or from?
And Dr. Harrington can probably cite those quite well, but one of the things she has shared is that every year they have increased, which is why this past year, the numbers were larger in some class sizes, which is why we are now proactively making classrooms open and available just to start the year. So, this year, which will be a little different, making sure we have open rooms ready for kids to move into, and making sure we have staff already onboard for that. So, that will be a difference. But the reason is because of the uptick in some of those numbers. We want to make sure everybody understands that piece, so that as there's conversation about preschool, we now, this year, have more preschool spaces slotted than last year. And Ms. Sharp can give you that number. So, we actually will have more preschool students. We have more students placed at Shaner this year. We will have, continue to have our preschool class at both Scott and Williams, but we're doing it in a way that's responsible to create space for young people that we know will need it. Ms. Sharp, this year, we'll have, we received additional funding for our preschool spaces. Can you just share that as well, so the board is aware of that?
We did. We, when it first started, we were at 204. They increased us to 210. This year, we're up to 215. I had requested 228, feeling that we could easily hit that number based upon the data that district collects during the auditing process. We also have increased the amount of tuition students that we're serving and adding additional classrooms at Shaner.
So, that, and so that's just the numbers, the 215, that's just what the Kansas preschool program pays for, right?
You have the four-year-old at-risk.
Yeah, that doesn't even take into account.
That's not PIP, that's not Sheldon, that's not Heinrich.
Sheldon, Heinrich. Any of the extra general fund money that we put in to support the operation of early childhood.
Correct.
Which, sorry to belabor this, I know that surprises you all that I would do that, but this is a, I'm loving this conversation, because back 12 years ago, the four of us, I guess the old folks here, only in terms of tenure, came on the board. We were spending, they told us, less than one-half of one percent of our general fund on early childhood education. We were only using the, what at that time they called the Kansas four-year-old at-risk program. And we weren't even using all of what we could have been granted in other programs like parents' teachers, because we didn't invest in any kind of facility. We were still renting the west side space. So, I mean, in my estimation, from somebody who sat here this entire time, you guys have done an excellent job in taking us from kind of a small-ball type of program to realizing that this really is our opportunity, like it's our best tool in the toolbox when it comes to eliminating the achievement gap and getting us there. So, thank you. So, Sarah, what class size are you shooting for for this?
Most of the all-day programs have eighteen students. That half-day program, we would like to be able to stay under fifteen.
So, what percentage of our kids, if you project a year out, what percentage of these, of our incoming kindergarten class will have attended one of these Topeka public school preschools, do you know?
I would like to say close to fifty. I would have to do math.
And then, the other fifty percent, are they attending some other form of preschool? Or do you know that data, or Mr. Kip probably does, but?
Some of them are caught. No, I was going to say, that's probably good data to track and really to bring back to look at just from last year. And so, perhaps, because we'll do another early childhood presentation in August, because you'll know how many kids have enrolled and registration will be over, but maybe looking at last year, how many kids came in with no preschool? I mean, because that's really something that we want to track anyway, because technically, as we've expanded the kinds of services, magnet and PIP and all the other kinds of things we're doing, we should see more kids coming in to kindergarten with preschool. So, maybe we can come back with some hard numbers, but I'm sorry, were you going to add to that?
I was just going to say, some of those were able to catch through kindergarten orientation. And if they haven't been to a preschool, then they're eligible for the CAP program that we run with the Y via the United Way.
Which starts on Monday. So, with the many different opportunities that we give them, including the shorter version of the CAP program through United Way, we'll plan to bring that data back in August. And really, what we could do after school starts is just ask all of, you know, we know from the parents, were you at a preschool or not, for the ones that we didn't catch early on in registration. So, we should be able to give you some hard, good data with that, and if not in August, certainly the first board meeting in September. And then, moving forward, we'll continue to track that, just to show impact, which is the strategic plan. If there are no other questions for Mrs. Sharp, then based on just consensus here, we're going to continue to move forward with the magnet scope, the way we've been doing, and focusing on early childhood in the manner that we have. Ms. Keegan, she is just a true bird. She broke her foot, and she has just leant on in here to answer any questions, because a lot of that magnet relaunch conversation was after a building, and she is getting ready to move, transition into her building. And really, her official day is July, but she's been there pretty regularly, assisting in a variety of ways. If there are other magnet questions for her at another time, know that in August, after she's been onboard for a month, she'll come back doing that early childhood presentation, and then she'll be able to share what some new things are that we're doing at that point. Thank you both for being here.
Thank you.
As we move from there, we would like to introduce you to Mr. Candyac Chrome, who is the Meg Brown in.
A little different.
That looks a little different, yeah. So, for those, so some people said, hey, I've never met him, or this is a new name before the board meeting started. So, we just want to remind you that Mr. Candyac Chrome, who's been at Topeka High, Meg Brown strongly recommended that this would be her successor, and she trained him for that. And so, he is just exceptional for those that have had the pleasure of meeting him at our mental health meetings and so forth. So, but tonight, he's here to talk about gifted, has some great ideas and some new plans ahead. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Candyac Chrome.
Sure, thank you for the introduction. So, I just wanted to go over briefly kind of what the presentation's going to look like. So, part of our strategic plan is that we wanted to assess our gifted resources, K-12, and then provide expanded gifted resources and expanded enrichment, K-12. So, a pretty broad, global part of the strategic plan. So, what I outlined in the presentation today, I'm going to show you guys some tables with some data, what our gifted referrals and our hit rate, and I'll explain that when we get to the next slide, have looked like this year and the past year, what our total gifted enrollment looks like. I did not include grade level. One thing I made, Brown always provided to the board, was a full year report, not just for gifted, but for all of the disability categories and special ed, so that will be forthcoming to you guys as well. But included in this presentation, I will go over the gender and race numbers for our gifted enrollment. And then, I'll talk about kind of what our gifted child find process has looked like, and then some ideas of what it could look like. For those not super familiar with special ed, Child Find is kind of our foundational special ed regulation. It says that all districts must seek out and identify students with exceptionalities who may need special education. And then, I'll talk about the newly formed Gifted Eligibility Committee, and some of our short and long-term goals and plans on how to get there. So, first, we have the referral numbers. I just include the past two years, but the end-of-year report will include, Meg was a data hoarder. There's probably data going back to 2005, 2006. So, we have tons of data as far as like the trends over the years. So, for the last two years, we've been a little concerned. We've seen around seventy-five referrals come in per year, and then our hit rate has been around sixty percent. So, hit rate means number of students that are referred that actually end up qualifying. So, the reason we track hit rate and look at that statistic is because we want to make sure that our entire process, whether it's GEI, pre-GEI, evaluation, even our criteria, is helpful at identifying the right, right students once they're at the table. So, our referral numbers are a bit concerning, but a couple pauses will load that, especially for this year. Nearly half of the year, referrals came in the last three months of school. So, what prompted that? Around March, beginning of March, I sent out an email to all of the GEI teams. I was like, hey, guys, where are the gifted referrals? I know they're out there, but I'm not seeing them. Part of my job is I review every single special ed referral that comes in from the district. They all funnel in through my department, then we track the evaluation timeline and things like that. One of the things I also did was reach out specifically to all the counselors and the school sites, and ask them to support their buildings and the referral numbers backup. And so, we were able to get a lot of referrals in really quickly. My teams scrambled to get those evaluations completed by the end of the school year. And so, what you see are awfully completed evaluations. The last thing, and I'll get on this more in a future slide when we talk about what we did yesterday at the school improvement meeting with the principals, but I'm very excited, because the schools are very excited to move forward and to increase our gifted numbers. And I think we can do a lot really quickly. I think we've kind of lost focus on giftedness in the past couple of years. And even just printing out all of the Scantron data for the spring and sharing that with the teams yesterday, we found just a large amount of students that should have been referred, that we can go ahead and refer them the end of next school year. All right, so this shows our gifted population by race slash ethnicity, and then by gender. So, our overall gifted enrollment, our overall gifted population is on the very bright. So, last year, it was three-eighty. This year, it's little up at three-eighty or three-ninety-eight. Every year, we lose about forty gifted students to graduation. And so, based on our gifted qualifiers for this year, which was forty-five, we're replenishing that, but we're kind of just like staying stagnant. The goal moving forward is to increase our numbers, especially for our underrepresented populations. Gender, and again, with all of this stuff, we'd like to see the numbers consistent with what our overall demographics for the school are. So, we definitely have an underrepresentation of some of our minority categories, our DLO students. So, those are some of our big focuses moving forward. Okay, so, some highlights from the data. How it works is referrals equals evaluation. So, it's very, very rare that I would get a referral and it doesn't end up going to evaluation. What my process is, is the team sends in the referral, and if I have questions, concerns, I'll kind of take some of those questions back to the team. It's primarily just collecting additional information from the team, so that way, when we do move toward into evaluation, the evaluation team has a full picture of like what's been going on on the general ed side of things, so they can plan out their evaluation process. So, all the students, like I said, we got a huge influx at the end of the school year, and my people scrambled to get those evaluations done, get the students placed. But we are evaluating five parochial school students this summer, and so we've already coordinated with those parents to have them bring the students in. And then, we'll do the testing this summer, and then pull the eligibility, and if they qualify, an AP at the very beginning of next school year. And this was just to ensure that we are catching the vast majority of students that we may have missed with schools kind of not being as focused on gifted referrals. So, our gifted referral numbers have fluctuated over the years, and so, there's multiple factors that I'll kind of discuss what we could use in that. But one of our immediate needs is we need to consistently bring our referral numbers up. So, we've gone anywhere from one-hundred-and-fifty, probably like five or six years ago, to now we've been at like seventy-five-ish the last two years. And so, I'd like to see our numbers consistently at at least one-hundred-and-twenty-five. And looking at the, our universal screener data, our state assessment, just recently as yesterday with all the school teams, I'm very confident that we can get an influx of referrals going right into next school year. Our hit rate has been fairly consistent at fifty to sixty percent. This is relatively low, especially compared to our disability categories. So, our hit rate for those, the other thirteen special ed criterias, is around seventy-five to eighty percent. So, to me, that says that, you know, we're doing something different. There's multiple aspects that are feeding into our gifted process. So, what are we doing before GEI? What are we doing in GEI? What are we doing during our evaluation process? And is our criteria good? We need to take a systematic approach, really looking at the whole picture altogether, because in the past, we fluctuated with our referral numbers. One year, we focused on our criteria. We changed our criteria to be more inclusive of students from diverse backgrounds, but then we shifted some of the focus away from GEI, the evaluation process. So, moving forward, we really have to capture the whole systematic approach altogether and improve all areas. The one we need to start with is our referral numbers, because that's related to Child Find. I don't want to miss students. And then, after we get our referral numbers up, again, shifting that focus over to a whole systematic approach, and not just for gifted students, but, you know, the general ed side of things. We need a full continuum of support for students that may not even end up being gifted. We have a lot of students that are talented, that each honors AP, that may not meet that criteria, but that can still really benefit from some enrichment and challenging activities. Okay, so, here's kind of our next steps and what our process looks like. So, Child Find is not just evaluation, and it's not just universal screening. It's really the whole systematic approach, which I was talking about. So, tier one and tier two, what are we doing in the classroom very early on when a teacher notices a first grader who's maybe picking up some concepts more quickly? What are some things we can do right in that instance that provides some enrichment opportunities to really start kind of differentiate between or identifying students that may need a little something extra? And so, again, our plan is first start with referral numbers, because that's our biggest concern, and then expand this into the whole global approach to how we're systematically approaching gifted. That kind of covers both points. Number two, and then finally, so very recently, and this was a really interesting story. So, I was chatting with actually the gifted facilitator at Robinson, and we were talking about some of the referrals that had come in, and we kind of started kicking back some ideas back and forth about like, you know, what do we think about our gifted process? What do we think about our gifted services? Are we doing the right things in evaluation? And she was like, well, you know, you should come over and meet with myself and then one of the other gifted facilitators at McCarter. So, we met up like a Friday afternoon for an hour and a half. And what I found out, but I was actually really excited about is, so the gifted facilitators were working on this concern with our overall gifted systematic approach, and so were the sites. We were just doing it separately. And what I found out, just seeing that with them for an hour and a half, is that we have the same big-picture ideas, and the ideas we were bouncing off of each other of how to get there were really, really consistent. So, I was excited that like, you know, this group was working on it, this group was working on it. And then, when actually I reached out to Ms. Cooney, as far as like what the principal's concerned about, we all had the same big-picture concerns and kind of the same big-picture ideas for where this needs to go, more than just increasing referral numbers, more than just, you know, looking at our criteria, but this whole systematic approach to what we're doing for all talented and potentially gifted students. Again, starting on the general ed side of things, even before GEI, even before they're referred, what are we doing for all those students to make sure we have a full continuum of support available? what are we doing for all those students to make sure we have a full continuum of support available? And so one of the things that we did yesterday was I met with all of the school improvement teams over at French. And what I did feed into that was I compiled a list of all the universal screen day we have. So primarily Scantron, which looks at the reading math three times a year. I also integrated in the state assessment data. And I highlighted students that scored at the 75th percentile or above in either academic area, or they hit level four on the cap. 75th percentile is quite a bit lower than what our criteria is, which is the 97th percentile. But the reason I included all of those students in there, and then when I went around from classroom to classroom, meeting with the principals and their teams to kind of go over the list and provide some training, is Scantron academic testing is great at identifying a lot of gifted students. The one population it's not really great at are the ELL students or some of our students from diverse backgrounds. Primarily for ELL students, because language is so intertwined with academics, our academic, universal screener, Scantron is just not as good as picking up those students. So what I wanted to talk to them about is with this list, you may see students that are performing a little lower academically, but talk with your teachers about these students. Talk with, you know, parents in the building that are working with these students. Talk with your ELL teachers. You know, are there other factors beyond just academics which could be impacted by language that really stand out when you're comparing them to their same age period within the ELL classroom? And that's something that we actually did at Topeka High, just kind of ad hoc was, I think it was like my second to last year there. Julia Pond, the gifted facilitator, and I had this idea that we were just going to walk down and start talking with the ELL teachers. We hadn't gotten a gifted ELL referral in, I think, like the first two years I'd been there. So we just went down and started talking with the teachers as far as, you know, gifted might look different in your classroom compared to the other students in your classroom. Do you have students that are picking up a concept really quickly that are developing their English proficiency really quickly? Send some of those my way, and we'll, you know, either screen them, do an evaluation. I think that one semester, we evaluated six ELL students. And this is in high school, so these students should have been identified. And I believe we identified four of them out of the six. So those conversations, that collaboration with the ELL department. And one of the exciting things we did this morning was Erin Kip and I went out with Anita Curry about what are some collaboration opportunities? What are we doing as far as our Spanish-speaking universal screener? What are our best options? How do we collaborate better in the buildings and reassure that teams are collaborating and really helping identify those students? And so that's something that we're really excited to continue working on. And Anita reached out to a couple statewide organizations and colleagues of hers to see, you know, what they're doing for ELL students. Because it just, the language component really impacts so many of our screeners that we have to take a different approach. So we've already done quite a bit of things. We've compiled a lot of information. I've provided lists and some trainings to all the student improvement teams. One of the things we're going to do right when the semester starts in August again, if you can just skip that, is go out to the buildings again and reinforce that training. Get the list back in front of them. Let's try to get our referral numbers up right away. Provide additional training to ELL teachers, starting that collaboration in the buildings. And then one thing we want to do right away is developing and passing out an easy-to-use enrichment intervention guide for tier one and tier two. And this was an idea actually one of the gifted facilitators had that I thought was just really exciting is, with Google Classroom, Google Forms, we can do a lot of things extremely quickly and efficiently. And one of the ideas that they came up with was to provide like a folder for every grade level. So at first grade, these were the general standards as far as the curriculum. But what are some add-ons for activities? Three or four things extra they can do when they start to notice that Johnny, the first grader, is starting to, you know, kind of get through his assignments pretty quickly. His problem-solving skills just seem to kind of stand out among the class. What are some things that we can do really quickly on the front end to start working with those students and identifying potential candidates? Or just students that may need additional enrichment that may not necessarily be gifted? Okay, so long-term, like I said, the referral numbers are the immediate concern. It's related to Child Find. I think we need to do a much better job of getting those referral numbers up. I think that's actually going to be the easiest part of this entire process. Now that we've gotten the information out in front of the buildings. I mean, yesterday, I had countless teams telling me, you know, we want to refer this kid. We think, oh, yeah, this kid, this kid. It's just, they hadn't looked at all the data in a compiled form or files, like multiple different areas. So I'm very confident that, I'm actually a little worried that at the beginning of next school year we're going to get such a huge influx of referrals that my sites probably for the first month are only going to just do get to the evaluations. But I do think we fell short this year, so it's something we need to do immediately. But then for long-term, we want to continue to provide those data tables to buildings three times a year. You know, the Scantron data is out there, but buildings just haven't been in a routine of consistently using it three times a year. And that's something at the district level, we can help them out with. One of the things that I can also do is because I review all of the referrals, I can, you know, in real time, I can look month to month or quarterly as far as, you know, we're getting a lot of referrals from this building. That looks like it's going amazing. I haven't gotten any referrals from this building. And it's not like a punitive, like reaching out to scold them or anything like that, but reaching out to see what additional support might you need? Let's get our team out there, our district level team, our committee members. Let's establish some collaboration within your building to really try to highlight those students who are performing at a higher level. And let's get those referrals in. We want to continue to increase our consultation and involvement of gifted facilitators and the school sites, and really the full continuum of support. So there's limitations to what special ed staff can do on the general ed side as far as like providing direct general ed interventions. But the consultation and the expertise that the gifted facilitators have, and the sites have, is incredible for working with those teachers, working with those GEI teams. And then even within the evaluation process, integrating gifted facilitators more in the process. So it's not just a site, but it's a full team that can bounce around ideas and really come up with a more thorough process, which ultimately if they qualify, will provide a more thorough IEP and education plan. So I touched on reviewing the referrals. And one of the things that Anita is currently working on with us is to continue to review possibilities for a universal screener. It's interesting, a document that Dr. Anderson actually pointed me to was, Missouri has like kind of guidelines and suggestions for how to set up and start a gifted process within a new district. And one of the areas that they specifically discussed is minority students, ELL students. So what are we doing for those students? And the first thing they recommend is establishing that formal, consistent line of communication between in-your-buildings, the general ed staff, and the ELL teachers, and providing that additional training guidance. And so that document, and I've also had my site team working on additional research, additional documents. We've actually come up with, I can show it to you guys if you want. It's like kind of common characteristics of giftedness for ELL students. So I think Julia Pond, the gifted facilitator, and we just kind of knew a lot of the characteristics. But there are going to be buildings that aren't as familiar with characteristics of giftedness. We want to be able to provide not just, hey, go talk to your ELL teachers, but here's a guidance document as far as like what the characteristics might look like, what ELL students, how they might stand out amongst their peers, those types of things. I think that's all I got. Questions?
I'm going to open this up.
And Dr. McCarthy.
Hi, thank you so much for the presentation. That is a lot of information to absorb, and I know I, for one, will probably need to go through it again and think it through. I have numerous thoughts on this issue, both as a psychologist, and as a school board member, and as parent of kids who participate in our program. I think everything you mentioned in this presentation today, I probably heard 12 years ago, and eight years ago, and four years ago. And it's a little dismay to see how tenacious some of these problems are. There's not a lot that's surprising to me, to be honest. And we have tried many different approaches over the years. And sometimes there are some changes that we've put into place that initially seemed successful, and, you know, they've disappeared. And as a board member, at this point in my tenure, I really find myself thinking more strongly about asking those questions of when we put a solution in place, how are you going to make sure we're checking on implementation? And that we're not having to come back again and again with the same issues? That we should be able to put a sustainable system in place that's not dependent on an individual either? That we don't lose the institutional knowledge of that when people turn over? And gifted education in a diverse district is a moving target. There is so much to consider. And I'm impressed that, you know, you hit all the major bullet points. So that gives me a lot of confidence that, I know that you have done your research. I'm thrilled that you're including gifted facilitators. Because they can give you that feedback and that knowledge that sometimes we're all making assumptions that may not be what they're seeing in the field. So in particular, that piece about referrals and that PD to staff that's going to have to occur yearly, because think of all the new teachers we get in. Every single year, you're going to be needing to be coming back, and those gifted facilitators can help with that, in saying, this is what gifted looks like. It's too often people equate it with high achievements. And not, you and I know that's not the same thing. But people are very resistant to that idea. They say, well, if they're gifted, they really shouldn't be scoring 98% on that, right? Particularly, we know for those older kids, underachieving has hit. They've given up, third grade on, they've not been identified by then. We have lost a huge number of them. So hats off to you two for tackling the high schools and trying to pull those kids back in, because we know they're there. We also have looked over the years at our our policy regarding cutoff scores, what IQ instrument to use, and how we treat that. You know, do we require the global score? Do we allow for the individual performance verbal scales if there's a difference? Do we allow that? Do we consider scores within the confidence interval? You know, a scientist would say that's a significant score, but consistently, we've just set a rock-solid cutoff score, and that's it. So there are all kinds of philosophical issues at play that I know that your committee will be examining. And coming up with our own best practice, right? And looking at what we know are best practices in other places, but also looking at what seems to fit our needs. So, let's see, another thought I had. You know, one thing that happened for us in the past, because my very first year on the board, we had a gifted education committee meeting regularly. Did surveys of parents. We consistently found that our parents who had kids participating were pretty happy with the system we had in place. Most will be thrilled with the general education interventions, that they wanted more than one day of gifted per week, right? Every child's right should be to learn something new every day at school. And often, that's not the case for gifted students. So being able to, in addition to the pull-out program, provide those resources. And I believe that's something that, idea of having resources available was something. I remember the elementary school, the elementary-level gifted facilitators had developed some projects in the past, and some kits that could be taken into the classroom. Those may have left with those teachers, must have retired by now. And so there's a new influx of people. So again, you know, we lose that when people leave. And gifted facilitators, a gifted program in general, has had no budget. They scrap for dollars and pay their own money to buy experiences and resources for kids. We'd like to see that change. One thing that happened in the past was that immediately after we did our work, we had this huge budget crisis, and the money was gone. And so now we are in potentially a different situation with maybe some dollars being available that weren't before, including if we need additional staff. If this whole issue of outreach to the schools is going to significantly change, it's going to take more than just the staff that we have on hand, right?
Agreed, yeah.
Yeah, so the board will be looking for those recommendations too. And I would like to see a return to an annual report. Because I guess that's, I guess, you know, our bad for not having that. For probably the last two years, we've had changes in the leadership. And then it leads us to lose sight. So I would like to see that be made a regular requirement for the board that we receive a report on the gifted education. Because it's too important to let kids go by without these opportunities when it's what, not only what they need to learn, but it's their right. It's their educational right. So, sorry, that was a little blathering. I may send you more questions as they come up. But thank you so much for the presentation. It's been very thought-provoking, and I look forward to seeing the recommendations that you and your staff bring forward.
Absolutely.
Can we ask the committee members that are here to stand, that are on this gifted committee? The ones that are here.
I think most of them are out of town.
Thank you for, thank you for standing and for being here this evening. And Dr. McCarthy, one of the items, you know, as McBrown kind of gave the comprehensive report. We really tease out the gifted piece because it is a portion of our strategic plan. And so really, rather than an annual report, you really should be getting something twice and potentially three times a year. Because, you know, one of the big things, if you remember three years ago, four years ago, AP courses, honors courses, you know, all of those are also very, very low. You know, outside of, so when we talk about how are we enriching students at every level, starting from preschool on up. So you'll be receiving another report when we go into, you know, September, October. Because really, end of the year is when it's over. And, you know, you're just saying, here's the summative of where we were. But you really want to be able to hold us accountable, and us to hold ourselves accountable, what does it look like this year after first quarter? And what is the rest of the year? So you can look forward to that as an additional change. And then Ms. Cooney, just as a side piece at her building, as a reminder, we moved all the gifted programs there, so that a principal is there helping oversee curriculum implementation, all of those items. And one of her gifted teachers now teaches, we call it STEAM, but providing enrichment school-wide as a model, which also now McKeckren is using, and Randolph is using. And so really looking at some different approaches with the principals being there as well. At least that's on the elementary end. So just those two side pieces. And we invite you to the committees in that on our website as we start off in August. Gifted isn't on our website in Topeka, and it really should have a presence in most districts. It does. So, you know, in August, you'll see that piece. So everything that you just talked about, you'll see, hey, here's the committee, and here's the curriculum, and here's what we're doing now. That's another public accountability system of being able to see what are the minutes to that meeting and all that. So those are just some other changes that weren't mentioned. I just wanted to add those.
Yeah, and I'm glad you mentioned again that referral piece too. Because if there's one thing that you mentioned tonight that really stood out was that when you're getting referrals, and, you know, most of the kids are being identified. I don't think 50% is that low of a hit rate. If it was, if it was too high, you'd be under referring, right? But I do think educating not just teachers, but also parents and students. They're allowed to self-refer also. There are multiple ways that people can come forward seeking those services. But they have to know what it looks like, and they have to feel comfortable coming forward and asking and advocating for their kids. And we know that there's a cultural difference in that. So it really, that illustration you gave of going to the ELL classrooms and really having a conversation about it, I think points strongly to some of what's going to have to take.
to take place.
Sure.
Mr. Wood is reporting.
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple of quick, first of all, thank you for the presentation, it's very nice to meet you in person. We've seen your name.
Can't miss it, right?
Well, yeah. Two quick things, so number one, I would love to see that guide that you've got for teachers to take a look at, you know, especially for students whose first language is not English. What, you know, gifted characteristics could be, can identify with. I'm sure you're sharing those with teachers all across, especially at the elementary level and at the high level, the secondary level.
I'm just checking to email that tonight if you guys want.
Yeah, that'd be great, that'd be great. My question really is kind of what it comes to for our gifted facilitators, our educators, how are they integrated in there, and the things that they're doing into kind of the overall planning for the district? Do we have any who serve on the CNA team over the summer, you know, when they get together and they?
I don't think there's any in our presentation on CNA.
Okay, we have special ed, I imagine.
Yeah, we do have one in your presentation, I copy.
Okay.
But not in any kind of curriculum, yeah, even though all the middle school, well, except for one, all the middle school facilitators teach like a dress.
And you may tell me that's not appropriate, that we're somehow able to integrate everything anyway, but it just occurred to me, I was curious.
So that's another uncovering of an issue, as we talk about curriculum and curriculum integration, making sure that voice is there. The committee rose out of, I, you know, asked Dr. Harrington and Mr. Kendy Akron to involve the principals, and so I spoke with the principals, and I asked Ms. Cooney, would she be the principal, because, at least on the elementary end, and really have this committee piece? Because without the voices of the field, whether it's on curriculum or anything else, there's a gap missing. So you can anticipate some changes in that regard as well, on the curriculum end in that regard. And the email out, I think Monday's probably, or Friday is probably, okay, Friday or Monday, just to make sure there may be some other pieces and links that we want to email as one full piece, and so Ms. Wallace and you can connect on that.
Absolutely.
Ms. Johnson.
Actually, I'd like to thank you for your presentation.
Yeah, I turned it off. Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you for your presentation on tonight. I think I got kind of excited with your excitement, and I appreciate the broadness of your land, because, you know, the whole concept that talent is evenly distributed, but among all opportunity isn't. I appreciate the comprehensive approach that we're taking, and like Dr. McCarthy said, yes, sometimes parents, well, we didn't even have it on our website, so we don't even know what the criteria even were as a parent to say, but I see these things in my child, but doesn't meet your criteria. So you're creating this approach, I mean, you're broadening that land so that we can see what pieces are missing, but to me, you were also equipping the people in the classroom to say, if you see this, you might want to be thinking gifted, not BD, you know, or not special ed. You might want to be thinking, these are other opportunities that this child needs. And I know that's exactly how it happened for me in first grade. I got my work done, I wasn't behaviorally, I wasn't acting out, just for the record.